Our next item, 6.8, 1:30 PM. Consideration of Discussion Regarding the State's Draft Emergency Information Order Regulations for the Clear Lake Watershed. And we have Director DeLeon with us. I'll pass it over to you.
Yes, good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
Okay, good afternoon. I'm Scott DeLeon. I'm Public Works and Water Resources Director. Marina Delajanas is on with me, and she has prepared a couple of slides for this presentation. We are bringing this item to you simply for discussion. There's no action to be taken, but if your Board has any consensus and direction to staff, then following the discussion, then that could be appropriate. A couple of things to note for anyone who makes public comment to this. The public comment is really going to just go to this Board. And any public comment that wants to go to the state, you're going to need to make that separately to the state. And Marina has a couple of slides, I believe, or at least one slide, that talks about the upcoming public hearings for this with the state. Go ahead and switch your slide there, Marina, to the next one there. We brought this to you because this proposed regulation has the potential to be fairly impactful. It provides the state the ability to gather information from all water right holders or water users within the entire Clear Lake watershed, to include groundwater users. It has the potential to impact anyone who has littoral rights, groundwater, if they're using groundwater with a well. And it's not limited to anyone that's near a creek or spawning habitat for hitch. This is basically includes every parcel in the Clear Lake watershed. And though we've only provided the draft main regulation that has the requirement, there's some other regulations in there that, of course, allow the state to fine people if they don't comply. So the way I interpret that, they reference two separate items that you would be in violation of, and each has a $500 per day fine. So the way I interpret that is the maximum fine that the state could charge would be up to $1,000 a day for noncompliance. So it's significant. Again, this is a discussion item for your Board. We provided some background about the proposed regulation with respect to its relationship to the Governor's Executive Order. All of that was included in your memo and the packet that we submitted to the Board. And with that, I think that's going to conclude my introduction. And Marina and I are here if you have any specific questions. And there is the slide that has the orders, the draft orders. So you'll have them there in front of you for your discussion. With that, I will turn it back over to the Board and be happy to try to answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I'll ask my question, and then I'll provide my feedback on the direction that I think we should look at. Clear Lake watershed, it's defined in the definitions as something that doesn't quite match what my definition would be. Does this preclude any other creek outside of what it speaks to? The Middle Creek, the Scotts Creek, Kelsey Creek? It seems to be more on the north and west, a little bit on the south as well, but nothing on the east side. Just wondering if it's "and" everything else, or did it not list everything? Or is it specific to those areas?
Well, in the slide that's in front of you there, there is a definition for Clear Lake watershed, and it appears to be the Middle Creek, Scotts Creek. It appears to be the west side of Clear Lake and would appear to coincide with the creeks and streams and tributaries that are historically used by the hitch for their run. So there is a bit of a conflict there, because the Clear Lake watershed, in our definition, is a much larger, much larger region. And so perhaps that's one of the things that could be better defined, is exactly the area that these regulations would apply to.
Yeah, and then it gets more confusing on the fact that it lists all these creeks, but yet also anyone using groundwater away from those creeks. What exactly is the distance? It doesn't seem to identify that. And so I have great concerns on what this impact, not just to those who would have to meet this new standard or meet the guidelines of this executive order, whether it's for commercial purposes or residential purposes or whatever, even our public utility systems. I'm just greatly concerned as to what that does and what we're asking for. And so because of my concern, I'm going to say that something was offered for me to do from this Board, and it feels like it's working, and I'd like to offer the same situation. We brought here the concerns of the California Department of Public Health's decision on the Syringe Exchange Program. The Board denied moving forward with a letter directly to them, but to engage in conversation. And we are engaging in conversation, and they are responding, and we have another meeting set up. And it feels like we're being heard. And I'd love to do the same thing, is send a delegate from here, a group from here, to speak with, I don't know if this is directly from Fish and Wildlife, or if it's the Water Board, or if it's a mixture of everybody that we need to speak with. But to have those conversations to help define and better understand what the impacts are, and to see if we can mitigate what appears to be the largeness of the impact at this moment in time, if we can bring it back to a remote location of those creeks versus such a broad term of watershed. So that would be my suggestion, is we engage in conversation and see what we can do to mitigate the scope of this order.
So at the workshops that are next month?
I think the workshops are not meant for that type of engagement. I think staff and supervisors engage directly with their staff. Once you start mixing in the public, they have their own agenda, not the public, but the Water Board will have their own agenda, and they're not going to be able to really sit us down and have a conversation with us to understand our needs and our concerns in comparison to a private conversation.
Can I chime in real quick?
Yes.
Yeah, Marina Delajanas, Deputy Water Resources Director. So going off of the comment made by Supervisor Sabatier, we did get an email this past week from the Water Board. This is their regulations that they have drafted up for compliance. So they had invited us to engage, provide any comments, but we would need to submit a formal public comment. I don't think that you can submit too many comments, so definitely hear what you have to say, Supervisor Sabatier, as it relates to having these conversations prior to. But just to reiterate, public comments are to be submitted via the formal process, which I have the slide here on, which we will be submitting via the October 19th Board meeting, or, excuse me, the Water Board meeting, which is in person. And then they have another formal public workshop to solicit these public comments via Zoom on Tuesday, October 24th. They will also take in any public comments in writing that you can send, and I have additional information. You can email that to them. And that public comment period closes on October 31st. So I don't think that we can reiterate and have these conversations enough. So just wanted to provide that additional information.
So it sounds like we're not going to be able to have those meetings, those conversations, before the public comment period. But we can try.
We could try. Again, the State Water Board did reach out to my department, and they did share that they are interested in having these conversations prior to. So what they can modify, you know, I'm not quite sure, but they did reach out to us, and they wanted to specifically hear any comments or questions that our department, the Watershed Protection District, has.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I hear a couple of opportunities for the county itself to offer comment. And one would be, we would have certain facilities or wells that we leverage. So the Watershed Protection District and the county as a whole, and maybe special districts, may have some very site-specific or facility-specific concerns about how this may impact them. For example, I know the city of Lakeport presumably would be subject to this because of their groundwater well at Green Ranch. But to the original thing about the scope of this, yeah, I believe it is purposefully broad in its scope and intent to cover the entire county, as through evidenced in those watershed definitions. And I want to acknowledge that the draft regulations, as they are presented here today, are not self-explanatory, not real self-evident what the end game is there. But I believe the, you know, if we're to summarize what we know and what we've learned in this long, long year of learning about the Clear Lake Hitch emergency, is we don't know what we don't know. And so the first step the State Water Boards took was earlier this year, when they focused on riparian rights and surface water diversions, and making sure that we had all the data coming out of the county that needed to be collected. And for those that were familiar with that process or heard about that process from a neighbor, it wasn't the most fun thing to get a notice from the State Water Boards, including the notice of potential fines and what have you. But at the end of the day, I think most of those people that received those letters found it very easy to engage with the State Water Boards, work out ways to figure out reporting mechanisms. And, you know, it may have been something that had never been asked of those people before, even though they were subject to the reporting requirements. And it may not have been, to be honest, a priority for the State Water Boards before that, because they were on the hook to collect that data, and we weren't exactly banging down the door saying, where's that data? So it's been a learning curve as far as the first steps of the State Water Boards into this subject. What's before is today, I think, is a very reasonable disclosure that if they are to take meaningful steps to address the Clear Lake Hitch emergency, and also the standing drought emergency order, the executive order that still stands, they need data. And we don't have it. You know, it'd be really hard to task Department of Fish and Wildlife with calculating in-stream flows sufficient to protect the public trust and to protect the hitch migration and spawning without really understanding the interplay between our groundwater and our surface water bodies. And on top of that, we also have a standing groundwater sustainability plan area in Big Valley. Same thing. At the end of the day, that agency is supposed to provide some type of knowledge and monitoring and oversight, and occasionally may want to execute some management actions, just to make sure we're managing the resource appropriately. We couldn't even begin to explore how to do that effectively without having a much better real-time picture of where our groundwater supplies are and where they might be bleeding off from time to time in real time. So, you know, I totally get if people are concerned in seeing this, but that's why we have public scoping sessions. That's why the State Water Boards, they are going to come here to Lakeport and do a listening session in person. They are going to do that Zoom session, and they're going to take all those comments together. And if there is some valid reason to limit the scope of this somehow, okay, let's talk about it. I talked in a previous item about the possible public trust areas and stuff like that that may be an area of focus. But at this stage in the game, what they're doing with this information order is basically saying, we do have a crisis here in Lake County. We do have marching orders through the executive order and through the heartfelt request of the Lake County community to do something meaningful. And that meaningful next step that they have identified, I fully support. We need to understand much better where our wells are, what wells we don't know about. And I don't think it's going to be universal water meters for everybody, but I do think there are going to be opportunities, especially for larger well installations, to put in well monitoring equipment, to take a voluntary action, so we can start building this database of well locations and well levels that will be useful to these future discussions that we need to have to figure out next steps for stream flows and fish. And that's about it. Thank you.
Anyone else before I open it up for public comment?
Just a final comment, and it is, so a complicated issue. Obviously, in reading through all the materials here, you know, I agree with, you know, the public comment opportunities we're going to have, and any other conversation that can happen between now and then. I agree with defining the areas. I did read it, too, to Scotts Creek, all the creeks that were on there, really look at the hitch conversation that we've been having. But some of this reporting, it shouldn't surprise me, if you have a water rights number, whether you're water diversion or water rights, you should be filling those out every year anyway right now. That's how you keep your license on a yearly basis. I know that, because I currently do that. You can do it online. There are other ways that you can do it, but if you're diverting water, putting it in ponds, using it for irrigation, or any other diversions, you know, if you have a standing license, you need to be reporting that on a yearly basis. So it sounded like they weren't going to do anything redundantly. There may be some other stuff. Now, obviously, the well conversation is something new, but at a county level, anyway, we know our neighbors in Sonoma, I think, implemented something for wells. So it is coming. So I think getting the definitions and stuff that we need to do are very important, but understanding that even in South County, where we're not a part of the Clear Lake, you know, watershed, you know, there is a cry from the community of understanding our aquifer a lot more than we are living off of down there. So I think these conversations are coming, you know, down the road anyway, so I think refining those definitions and other stuff are important. But participation is going to be just as important as anything else. So I would agree with any side conversations that Water Resources may have to come up with. You know, my thoughts are, being that it's on this side of the lake, it would be, you know, with Jessica and Mike, but that's up for the Board to decide. But Jessica, I know you work on a lot of different things, too, so.
I think we'll open it up to the public. I think we've got a lot of comments, potentially, some people in the chamber, so if you want to come up and state your name and give your three minutes.
It's Rebecca Harper with Lake County Farm Bureau. As this is, you know, primarily just a discussion and informational item, I'd just like to share some information for you as how the draft emergency regulations pertain to agriculture and the context around that, just so, you know, if it helps at all. Anyways, so essentially, what the draft emergency regulations do is outline the authority for the State Water Resources Control Board to issue an information order. So we had talked kind of about this information order concept when we started really discussing and focusing on the Clear Lake Hitch emergency. So that's essentially what these draft regulations do with regard to ag. So I think, you know, we could expect sometime in the near future for there to be an information order issued, specifically to gauge some more information on groundwater wells and what their usage is in the Big Valley Basin and the Clear Lake watershed as well. So just as some backstory to kind of everything that's been going on, there is an agricultural stakeholder group that's been working directly with the State Water Board and helping to provide them with feedback on the draft emergency regulations and some other processes as we go along, just as there's other working groups working with them as well. And so something that I hope we will see in the draft emergency regulations and in the information order is a mechanism for alternative compliance. It's something that we've been working on. But if there are those landowners who have been willing and cooperative to provide information so far, you know, we'd really like to see that they have the opportunity to do so and continue to work in cooperation outside of an information order, whereas that information order might pertain to individuals who are not so willing. So that's something that we're working on. It's something you might expect to see more of, but I just wanted to, you know, give you that information for what it's worth and let you have that as background as well. So if there's any questions about that, too. Awesome.
Questions about that? Okay.
You've got your thinking face on, Bruno.
Always.
I can tell.
No question, just thank you. You know, the Farm Bureau's been up front in this whole process, and I think to the extent concerns have been raised, Farm Bureau's been front and center in addressing them head-on, and the ag group, too. So I appreciate all the hard work, and I'm confident in the months passed that we're going to get through these future months just fine.
Yeah, if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out to me, as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Come on, Joan.
I was the public comment person for the Groundwater Sustainability Project under Denise or Michelle, and they were kind enough to write all of my public comments down for me. I mean, just recently, a friend of mine shared that he understands that there was an airplane surveying everything in Lake County, and he had built a pond at a Lake County supervisor's verbal permission 35 years ago. And he was being assessed for that pond, that he didn't have a permit. And he's one of the problems that the Farm Bureau woman is going to come across, because he had verbal permission to build it, and it's been 35 years. The vineyard right next to him has gotten their water development permitted, because they were just recently built, and they're recently permitted. But is it fair to make a 35-year-old pond that this fellow thought that he had permission to build pay a permit fee? Something like that. We have problems, I'm not going to say his name, I don't have permission to say his name, but it's going to happen all over our county, and we need to work together to try to solve it. That's what I'm saying. And I'd be glad to share what Kelly was nice enough to produce. I have it produced, and I'll give it to whoever wants a copy. It's not exactly, it's what I do. I am an investigative reporter. Sometimes we clash, but I do try to give the facts. So this is happening, and I think we need to share and communicate and try to work together. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone in the Zoom room? I don't have it open. Do we have hands up in the Zoom room?
No.
There are no hands raised in the Zoom room at this time.
Okay. Then I will close public comment. Supervisor Sabatier?
Well, now that I learned I can give verbal approval of things, I had no idea. I'm not looking to negate what is in front of us, but if we're going to be asking people to do things with the threat of a fine, I want to make sure that it's right what we're doing and fair what we're asking people to do, because it's not voluntary, it's being forced with a threat of action if you don't comply. And so I think having a conversation to better understand what their definitions are, what the scope of this is, I think is not a bad thing for us to approach the Water Board with to continue the conversation and better understand what their final aim is. And I would love to see us sending a group with our Water Resource team to have those conversations.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, again, I think the track record shows. Again, when we were talking about the surface water diversion, several people got notices, and at first glance are kind of scary. I've already given feedback during that process that I understand why their notices are written the way they are. They're legal documents, and they're advising people of information and how to, you know, how to get in touch with the Water Board and stuff like that. A nice cover letter goes a long way, maybe a nice envelope, too, but that type of feedback has already been given. But to the extent we're going to interject ourselves in what is really a state process, you know, we can certainly give feedback as it pertains to our facilities. If we can echo some of the concerns that are raised by some of the people in our community, we'll certainly amplify those voices. But this is their process, so we're going to participate, we're going to comment on it, but we're not going to drive it. And I just want to be clear about that.
So if I can argue that, yes, it's their process, but we requested for them to create this process. We literally asked for the Water Board to come help us with the hitch. That gives all the cards to the state. Again, not saying negate, but let's check in before we start asking our people to participate in something that we're not fully aware exactly what they're being asked to participate in. The impacts could be small, or the impacts could be large, and being at the table allows us to at least understand and prepare and possibly see if we can minimize the scope so that it actually is the right scope to work with. I think we know what our people can and can't do, much more than the state can. And rather than saying the ship has sailed, no, I think that's what we're here for, is to protect our people from things that are unnecessary to ask of them. Again, not negating what's being asked to do, but we need to be at the table with them to help them make sure that they don't do something that's an overreach.
Jess, were you going to say something?
No, you know, I could have said what I had to say. You know, obviously, we did the Clear Lake Hitch emergency. It is, this all derives from those conversations and what this Board made. That was a 5-0 vote, from what I remember. I really appreciated the Farm Bureau getting up here and talking about what's going on. When I read through the notices, it didn't say shall be fined, it said may, and through the conversations, and obviously, we know that is a slippery slope, but, you know, I just appreciate all the conversations that have been had from the Farm Bureau and the agricultural industry. I saw a list of preemptive opportunities to help with the flow this last year. It was like a 10- or 15-page suggestion on what they were doing. So I think the conversations are happening with the industry. I understand with the new thing with the wells, but the reality of that is it's coming. We need to be prepared for that down. It may not be in the next five years, but it might be in the next 10 for sure, so understanding that. So I think they've given us a process to go through, but if Water Resources wants to make some comments to really kind of divine things, I'm definitely in favor of that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of putting together a delegation. I'm not really putting together an ad hoc committee. Can't really do that today, but the timeline is short, and it's, the first meeting is on the 19th of October.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would hope that we could meet with them before that, but I will say that the next couple of weeks of my schedule are very, very tight, and so I... Would you like to do this? Because I don't think that I can get something on the calendar.
I can try. Obviously, it would have to work with everyone's calendar, and so it all depends on exactly when. I'm sure it'll be via Zoom or virtual, as it usually is with the state. So I'd be happy to make that happen.
Supervisor Green? Okay. And so try and get that meeting done in the next two weeks, if possible, so that you can come back to the Board before the comment period, which will begin on the 19th, so...
And we don't meet after the meeting of the 3rd, so at the earliest, maybe we'd be back on the 17th to share with the Board.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can meet on, yeah. So if we could bring that back to the Board on the 17th, have a group conversation after what you all have given feedback and learned, and try to understand more of what's being asked. I think that's the, I think that's the most appropriate thing that we can do right now. Supervisor Green, did you have something?
Yeah, my only question is, I do want to check with Water Resources, you know.
It'll be with...
They have some staffing issues. They have some staffing issues too, so I want to make sure they have bandwidth to accommodate our needs on that.
Yeah. I think that was offered up, but.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, it'll be Water Resources staff, the two of you. Not sure if we want to also add special districts in ag.
I think right now, we're looking for more information and better understanding, and we can share that with the others. And then when it's a point where maybe we want to share our concerns, then that would be a different conversation as well. Because right now, I think we need to better understand before we formulate concerns. That would be my opinion.
And a couple other thoughts. And again, it is short notice, kind of, but not incredibly short. So if there's interest from ag advisory, we could kick it there, get feedback. Scotts Valley Advisory Council, I met them with last night. I shared the regs with them again. There may be some regional concerns that come up. Big Valley GSP Meat Pool may have different concerns. So certainly, we'll spin up what we can do, but we do have ag advisory, we have Fish and Wildlife may want to give input. So there's any number of communities of interest that may want to kick the tires on this. So we'll certainly do, we won't call it an ad hoc, but we'll call it a working group or whatever. But there's plenty of other organizations that may want to give input. You may want to take it to your guys' max and get some input.
Well, I think we need to have the meeting with the Water Board with a small delegation first, and then come back to the board. There's a lot of other organizations and committees that can also submit comment during these two workshops, but I do agree that we should probably keep it a little tighter initially to have that intimate conversation.
I think it would be a good start.
Yeah. Okay. So I think you'll all be able to schedule something, preferably in the next couple of weeks, so that we can come back here on the 17th?
The four of us will communicate.
Oh, sorry. I thought you had something to add. Okay. Well, if there's nothing further, I think that was just consensus and information.
Chair Pyska, just maybe one final, just final reminder, the in-person participation meeting with the state, in your board packet, it lists the time as 2:00 on Thursday, October 19th. That has been revised by the state to 5:30. So just for members of the public who are interested in participating in that, it's 5:30 on Thursday, October 19th.
Here in the chambers. Yep. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for that item.